I just don't see him because I'm, my screen's a little reduced this evening. But is, did Jim Drain take advantage of the offer to be on Zoom with us?
Yes, he's on. I can put him as a panelist right now.
No, that's okay. Just curious.
Yes, he's here.
All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. And Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Yeah.
Mrs. Neary?
Here.
Mrs. Boatright?
Here.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Larry?
You may have to unmute, but.
Uh.
I don't see him on.
He's called in as an attendee, I think, if you look at the panel, the participant list. Actually.
Yeah, he was here.
He was.
He was. I, I did see him after I asked. I saw him, but.
I did see him too. I don't see him now.
He's not here now.
He's not here now. Nope.
All right, well, we have enough.
And Ms. Winslow?
Here.
Okay, so we can continue on with the meeting and get through a few of our things here. And hopefully, Mr. Larry can get back on with us. So we have the roll call. The next thing would be the Pledge of Allegiance. And as we started last month, we have the junior ROTC from Rogers leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, we are joined by Cadet Allison Branchfield. And Allison, we generally will ask if, I think you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we just ask that you kind of take it from here and ask everybody to stand. And when they're ready, you can begin. So Cadet Allison Branchfield, it's all yours.
If you guys can stand, I'd appreciate it. If you can't and you're sitting, that's fine. But here's our video for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, Vikings. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, visible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Cadet Branchfield, for joining us tonight. And thanks again to the ROTC for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I would just like to say thank you to Cadet Branchfield. She helped us fix the video and the sound for this evening. So two thumbs up. Thank you very much, Allison.
Of course she did. That's what we always say when the kids are around. If we have a problem, ask them to fix it, right Maggie? All right, uh, next is the moment of silence. And we have, please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. We have David Torresenta, uncle of Emily Loftus, science teacher at Thompson Middle School, cousin of Ellen Reina, kindergarten teacher at Pell School, uncle-in-law and brother-in-law to Raleigh Brennan, English teacher at RHS, and Mary Shan, social worker at Pell School. Sharon Kane, aunt of Elizabeth Brett, secretary to the IT director. Al Babian, I believe, father of Elaine LaValle, Elena LaValle, special education teacher at Pell Elementary School. Sean Donley, cousin of Tricia Donley, teacher at Pell Elementary School. As well, this evening, on the, on the eve of Veterans Day, I would ask that we also keep all the veterans that have served our country and given the ultimate sacrifice so that we can be here doing this tonight as well. So a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, next item on the agenda is the Student Council update. And as we have Maggie Cohen with us this evening again, as she always is, to give us a monthly report on the activities of the Rogers High School Student Council and its student body. So Maggie, if you jump right in there.
So I'm Maggie. I'm the president of the Student Council at Rogers for the second year in a row. I wanted to start off by saying that we do have new Student Council officers who might pop in instead of me one day. So our new vice president is Ella Walker, who is also senior. Our treasurer is Catherine Kerwin, another senior at Rogers. And our secretary is Marcy McKeon, another senior at Rogers. So if I'm not here, one of them will be here. Um, an update on sports, tennis, girls tennis has had an undefeated season and will be moving to playoffs. So they are going to playoffs next weekend, I believe. Soccer, the girls are playing, well, they just won against Tolgate with a 3-2 win. And they will be playing Tolgate again on Saturday in hopes of making it to the playoffs. And then the boy soccer team just beat Block Island 4-1. And they play Tiverton on Wednesday. And if they win that game, they also go to playoffs. And the cross-country team just competed in Classic C, which is everyone in the Class C. And they did not play sadly, but hopefully next time. Um, so the Newport Public Schools has a new IT help desk for students and families. It can be found at helpdesk@npssri.net. And other information was sent out in the Rogers announcements every day. So if anyone ever needs help with technology at home, that's where to find it. Senior shirts are available. So if any of you have seniors in your lives that, in your lives that go to Rogers, you are able to get your senior shirts, as well as the graduation gown measurements were just sent out today. So if you have any seniors in your life, make sure they fill that out. There are tutoring services all week, as there usually are, online. So Alyssa, Miss Alyssa, I'm going to butcher her last name, but it's Hurst Brunner, I believe, at 2:00 PM. And they cover every, every subject throughout the week. So once again, if you know anyone at Rogers who needs help, please let her know. The Rogers PTO is setting up a Dropbox at Rogers for disinfectant materials. So if you need to send in disinfectant wipes, all the teachers really appreciate it as they're in high demand at this time. So they are doing a run for that. The box is outside room 100, which is Mr. Core's room, right as you enter the English hallway. And it would really appreciate a donation. And the Newport Public School Town Hall is on November 12th over Zoom. And I believe that's all.
All right. Thank you, Maggie. Is there any questions from anybody on the school committee for Maggie?
Um, yeah, Maggie, this is Stephanie. Hi, can you tell me more about the tutoring that was Wednesday's at 2:00? I kind of missed all the details.
Yeah, of course. It's all week. So they have a different subject each day. And at 2:00 PM, Alyssa Hurst Brunner, her email is her name, and MPSRI. She does tutoring every day. So each day is a different subject. So I think I have it written down. Um, I do not, but it's like Mondays an English tutoring, Tuesdays a math tutoring kind of thing. It's a really helpful resource if you're struggling online as well, so.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else? So I have a question on those senior t-shirts. Do they like a fundraiser type thing? Or do they have the senior's name on it? Is it like a family thing?
It's the senior class shirt. So it's like if we were to do Powderpuff, it's those shirts. But since we're not doing Powderpuff, they just say like, "Class of 2021." I believe the information is sent out in the announcements. But if not, the senior class officers are Michael Phelps, Anna Murphy, Alexandra Cranston, and Kaylee Moser. So if you have any questions, they would be happy to answer any questions you have. And they're always quick to reply. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for Maggie before we move along?
I have one.
Go right ahead.
Could you, could you update us on how the, the bird strikes are going?
Oh, of course. I haven't heard any super new news. It's been running through all the students. I've gotten flocked and then I've requested a couple of people to get flocked. It's a very good time. I haven't heard anything new, but I know they're still doing it. So. They go out, they're going out, I think, once or twice a week. So.
Yeah, I see them still. Take walks and there's those birds.
Oh, they're all over the place. They've been working hard to get them all over the place. And it's been going very well. So.
Luckily, they're not very messy.
They are very good about disinfecting them. I know my friend Mikey is the guy who does it a lot. And he has this massive thing of wipes. So before he even picks it up, he puts on gloves and takes wipes and wipes all of them down. And he's very good about the whole thing. And it's done very well. So they can to them.
Excellent. Any other questions for Maggie? I don't believe so. So again, Maggie, thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Take care.
Great job, Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Rast.
So that leads us into public comment. I don't believe unless it's changed. And just before Mrs. Nash, is there anybody for public comment?
We do not have anyone this evening.
All right. So as I did say to a couple of members as we talked this week, we will take a little bit of personal privilege for everybody. And we, we're not taking any action, but I know a few members wanted to take time tonight if we had it. And this is a good segment to do it to just thank the public, thank the voters of Newport. Thank all those that worked tirelessly on the bond, for the success of the bond. And as we know now, it was a overwhelming success. There were many parent groups building Newport's future and many, many parents had worked to members of the school committee that worked very hard to get the bond passed. So I just want to say that and allow time if anybody else would like to say a few congratulatory words. We'll use this segment for that at this point. So I see Mrs. Bowlin like going, ooh, 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 with her hands. So, Mrs. Bowlin.
All right. So first of all, it was an overwhelming success. It actually went up today to 78.3% acceptance rate. Newport's ready for this. We're very excited. Louise and I, you know, are going to be heading up that committee. And we're going to be looking for a great deal of help, which on different kinds of subcommittees that are going to help with different parts of the building, both buildings. And so be looking for that. We'll get some information out with that in the next couple of weeks. But just wanted to thank everybody who, you know, worked so hard on it. And it's a great day for Newport.
Whoever would like to speak next, go right ahead and pop up if you want.
I was going to say, because we thanked, we thanked all the parents. I want to reach, also thank a lot of retirees, including my 88-year-old mother who went door-to-door dropping off things. So I think it was a huge, huge community effort. A lot of people participating. And just so happy and relieved that the voters voted so overwhelmingly for young families, young students, and the future of generations in Newport. So we thank you very, very much.
Who, anybody else?
Hi, Mr. Gomes.
Go right ahead.
Well, I'll echo, I think, what Ms. Boatright just said. I, I was pleasantly surprised by the bond results. Really, it, it was very heartening to, to really realize that the voters still care about Newport Public Schools and still care about residents and the families here. And I think the momentum right now is amazing. And I hope we can keep it up and make good things happen. And I'm very, very proud and very, very happy.
Goodness, Mr. Gomes.
Sorry, go ahead. Dr. Flowers, go right ahead.
I want to thank everyone who had enough confidence in me to reelect me to this particular post. And also, I was quite pleasantly surprised at the results of the, the bond issue. There's such a high percentage of people who truly believe in what we're all doing. And they believe in the school system. That's a big percentage. We have more than three-quarters of the voters doing the right thing. It, it's, it is overwhelming when you sit back and think about it. And I think the, our logo, if you wish, of Newport being one Newport. This is perhaps a good example of people from all parts of the city coming forward and do, again, doing the right thing. So I say thank you to everyone. And now the fun begins.
I'm just going to say, I was just going to say thank you to the Newport voters for their vote of confidence in the Newport Public Schools and in the leadership of the Newport Public Schools. And I am going to be cocky and say I am not surprised by the results of the vote. I, I thought and I felt I am. I mean, I'm not. I, I thought and I felt and we, a lot of us worked to make this happen. And I think we, the reason I'm not surprised is because ultimately, I always thought, and I think a lot of us always thought that the, the people of Newport, the parents, the retirees, that everybody in Newport really cares for the students, as really was evidenced with the last year's senior class. I think that is what started giving me a lot of confidence when we saw those banners on Broadway. And the outpouring of support. So it was nice to see it codified in a vote for the bond. But so thank you to all of the residents of Newport for their votes. And as Dr. Flower says, now the fun begins. Let's, let's build an extension and let's build a school. I am really excited about that.
Excellent. Any else? All righty. Again, thank you. And it's a great moment for Newport Public Schools. So we'll move on into our action items. We have, first action item is 4.1, it's a request for approval of the Rogers High School College ELA readiness course. This is a research-based way to ensure that students are prepared for success in college. The district will work with RIDE to help plan course implementation and provide an implementing teacher for each course. Professional development is provided by RIDE. I believe, Mr. Vance, are you gonna, I see Colleen, Dr. Jermaine saying yes. So, Mr. Vance, if you'd like to, well, I see Ms. North, Charlotte North as well. Whoever would like to take the role.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow Charlotte to speak of the program. It was something that she, her and Mary Beth Viera took it upon themselves initially to participate in a RIDE PD kind of exposure to the program. And they've been the main, the main driving force behind bringing it into, into Rogers, into the ALP. And I think it's going to be a fantastic program for our kids once it's up and running. So Charlotte, I'll let you take it from here.
Yeah, um, it was actually something that we learned about because of Superintendent Jermaine's Friday newsletters that come out from RIDE. And it was a summer program that WestEd worked with RIDE to pilot. And it's just very good instructional strategies for higher-order reading comprehension. So it, in many ways, I see it more as an opportunity for instructional coaching and to have really just excellent support and more eyes on us teaching and giving feedback to our students. And the other thing that's nice is technology is not necessarily usually a large part of this program. But because of the current context, they've created a course that is using, you know, an online delivery model. So we'll get coaching in that as well. So for English Language Arts, we do work in the Alternative Program with all four grades. We're going to offer this for our 11th and 12th graders as part of our normal English class. And I believe the memorandum, the memorandum of agreement is primarily for permission for RIDE and WestEd, their partner, to be able to observe us teachers as well as to have access to student assessments that we give feedback on. And there are going to be some student surveys, because a large part of it is really building their confidence and understanding of what it means to be a reader, a thinker, a student. And they're using issues of equity and student voice and student ownership as a vehicle for the work. So I just think it's a really marvelous opportunity in so many ways. And I'm so pleased we have the administration's support to participate. So I don't know if there are logistical questions.
So just before we get to questions, I got a little ahead of ourselves. We were so happy and cheerful about the bond. If there's a motion to, let's have a motion to approve 4.1 as presented, I see Ms. Boatright, second by Dr. Flower, is great. So we have a motion and a second. If there's any questions or discussions for anybody? Anybody have any, Ms. Boatright?
I just want to say, this is great that you guys took the initiative, I gather, to reach out to do this. So I want to thank you very much for doing that. It sounds like a very good program. So just want to recognize you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now, it is always great when sort of a grassroots idea comes up from the, the staff and gets the approval. So this is always a great thing, working together with the staff and administration to get better things for our students. So any other questions to comment? I'm not, oh, go right ahead, Ms. Winslow.
Actually, I, Mr. Gomes, I need to test my speakers. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I lost, I don't know, the earbuds. So I, I hear you over the computer audio. I guess I have speakers here. Great. Thank you.
All righty. Good. I don't think there's any other questions to comment. So although, Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call, vote to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented this evening.
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Seven zero. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you again, Charlotte, for all your work on this. And I'm happy to hear, excited to hear how it goes. So thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you, Mary Beth. Please tell Mary Beth thank you too.
I didn't know Mary Beth was here.
Thanks, Charlotte.
Thank you. Thank you to all. Okay. Next item is 4.2, it's a request for approval to award RFP NPS 21-007. It's an E-Rate Support Consultant Agreement. And is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented this evening? Ms. Winslow, and seconded by Ms. Boatright. And I believe that Mr. Gonzalez is with us to tell us a little bit about that. I don't, do we know? Oh, there he is. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. So annually, we contract with a third party, independent third party that helps certify our activity and eligibility to receive federal funding for supports with regard to our internet service, as well as switches in our district. So this contract allows us for a three-year period to use E-Rate online to perform these services on our behalf.
Thank you. Any questions about the E-Rate contract? Ms. Winslow? Ms. Winslow? Go ahead.
Time to unmute. I just, I, there's been several contracts with having to do with E-Rate, and it was confusing for me. And so I just wanted to reiterate the question that I asked. I asked via email earlier and let the public hear. But so there are basically three components at least, right? We have our internet service provider. And then we have another company that does things like the help desk that Maggie talked about. They do our network maintenance and operations and the security for the network. And then this E-Rate online company would basically be to, like you just said, to certifies what we're doing, gets the reimbursement. I won't go into all the details.
If I can jump in, the, the first two services that you mentioned, we would only be eligible to participate with the vendors with this E-Rate online certifying that we've performed the appropriate steps to obtain their services. Went out to an RFP, performed a competitive bid process and analyzing the information. And that is all certified with E-Rate online. And they also help us with planning to use the money.
Okay. It's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All righty, not seeing any. Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call, vote to approve the agreement as presented.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Excellent. Thank you. The next item is 4.3, it's a request for approval of an MOA with the Rhode Island Department of Education for COVID-19 capital expenses related to impacts of the coronavirus pandemic in the amount of $31,004. These funds must be used between July 1, 2020, and August 31, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the MOA as presented? I see Dr. Flowers with the motion, seconded by Ms. Boatright. And I'm not sure if Mr. Gonzalez or Dr. Jermaine will give us a little bit of a information on this.
The brief message is, due to COVID, there was funding sent out to districts based upon capital expenditures or projects in place. And this was mostly to help support HVAC, any mitigation that we needed due to COVID, to help the facilities.
Very good. And it's obviously retroactive, given the dates that we just discussed. So it would cover those periods.
Correct. And Mr. Gonzalez can jump in anytime.
So far, we're good. Mrs. Neary?
I have a question. Does that, do those funds cover everything that we spent in terms of HVAC for those expenses?
So they would be ineligible category, you know, HVAC cost would be for planning purposes because we've already spent or allocated some other resources in the direction of HVAC focus previously. We're not going to go back and retro change anything, but I'm going to go forward. We can plan to utilize these dollars first before tapping into our general fund for these allowable expenses. And we have filtration, ventilation, electrical plumbing, HVAC system, air quality testing. All of that is allowable activity for these $31,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All ready, not seeing or hearing any. Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call, vote to approve the MOA as presented.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Terrific. Next item is 4.4. It's a request for acceptance of a Rhode Island Commerce Corporation grant agreement in the amount of $35,000. The grant was submitted as part of the Take It Outside Initiative. And funds must be expended between September 16, 2020, and December 18 of 2020. And funds must be expended between September 16, 2020, and December 18 of 2020 as of a motion to approve the grant agreement as presented. Ms. Boatright, I see is making the motion. Dr. Flowers is second. And Dr. Jermaine, Mr. Gonzalez, who's?
Okay, I'll start. This is a culmination of each of the schools. They each thought of a different initiative in order to use funds to enhance either the curriculum they were working on or to add some, for instance, at the high school level, social emotional support, et cetera. So each of the teams at each of the schools, at the middle school, they're working with, in a science area with trees. And at Pell, it's escaping me at the moment. I'll have to go back and look into the grant. I know Nicole Sylvia was working on that to enhance some outdoor activities at Pell. So the combination came to 35K for Newport. And Kerry Clark, Nicole Sylvia, and Nicholas Baccarat at the middle school are heading each one of those three mini projects.
Terrific. Any questions from anybody?
I have a comment.
Dr. Flowers, that was a good fake out, by the way. Going to scratch your head. Go ahead, Mrs. Neary.
I mean, it, for the, for the next meeting, I won't be on it, but it would be nice to know what those, what those projects are at each school. You know, just have, just know, like at Rogers, they're doing this, at Pell, they're doing this, and at Thompson, they're doing whatever. So it'd be nice to get each one of the persons in charge of the projects to present them.
Okay. And in the grant itself, it does share out what they'll be doing. And I can certainly have them come back. And you can hear from the actual people that are putting up the tents and, you know, the culinary. They're going to do some culinary arts. They're going to do a wellness outdoor shelter system at Rogers. They're going to have yoga, mindfulness there. And then the trees and the other projects, I can certainly have them come back and speak with you.
It just, yeah, it's in there, like listed, but it doesn't really say.
Right.
It says what, what items they need. It doesn't necessarily say what it is that they're doing. So when you say the trees, I don't know what that means.
All right. They're going to be, they're going to be monitoring and looking at the trees throughout the city of Newport.
Okay, right. That's what I mean. The trees, great. What trees? What are they doing?
Learn more about trees.
Okay. But anyway, that's my suggestion.
Okay.
You know, I think I'll mention it out loud so that my other right hand, Mrs. Nash, can remember to remind me for next month on discussion items that maybe we add a little segment about how each of our schools is coping or doing things differently during COVID. It might be a good, good segment during our discussion portion of the meeting, next following meetings going forward.
And again, I want to applaud the teachers. I want to applaud the teachers for grassroots effort again at each of their schools coming up with creative initiatives to help support students and families. So thank you to them.
Now, Dr. Flowers wants me to acknowledge you. Dr. Flowers?
No, I would, that was, I was just pushing the hair out of my eyes. No, I think besides letting us and the committee know what's happening, it's the general public who is watching and will be hearing about this to see what is going on in the schools. And this is something that we should really keep promoting as we go along, especially something, and we say different. You say, you know, we have the young people who are looking at the, the trees all around Newport, which is called a tree city. You know, it's a national thing. And it's very important to validate really what is going on with our teachers and our students. And I think the public deserves to know what's going on. And it's, and I think because we have been getting the word out about different things, that's why people are supporting us now and our endeavors. So thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Anybody else? Is it Larry? No? Okay. Oh, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
This is just sort of a comment, but I think I read in the paper that a lot of schools got this grant and they were going to use it to enhance outdoor Wi-Fi. And I just think, I like the ideas, the grassroots projects and like doing things outside a lot better than just more Wi-Fi. So that's exciting. But I was curious to know if we have outdoor Wi-Fi or if it even crossed anybody's radar.
Yes, it did cross our radar. I think Mr. Young's here. And actually, we have been trying to partner up with, actually, Rhonda Mitchell out at the Housing Authority to help enhance Wi-Fi out there. And we've been looking into different grants. I don't know if Mr. Young wants to speak more to it, but I did, I did share with him. I was aware that other districts were looking at that. I do not believe on the outside campus, we do have the full ability for Wi-Fi, but Mr. Young might be able to comment on that.
Yeah, right now, we don't have, you know, the Wi-Fi outside, but we have been looking into that and to the ways where, you know, we can provide more opportunities, you know, for our students to access Wi-Fi. So we are looking into that. We are, like Colin said, we're working with the group over there. Just looking at ways, you know, to improve accessibility, you know, for the students and that, yes.
And like, go right ahead, Ms. Boatright.
I just thought I read in the grant, though, that there is outdoor Wi-Fi in some of these tents. Is that not true? That is true for Ms. Clark's, yes.
There'll be spots, there'll be mobile Wi-Fi spots for those tents, yes.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
And just so you may, you may be aware, part of the reason for a lot of the Wi-Fi is because spectators are not allowed to attend sports activities. So a lot of the schools looked at different ways they could offer some kind of broadband or some kind of streaming while the outdoor athletics were going on and the competitions. So that was part of the reasoning for, because I inquired, what's the big thing about Wi-Fi? What's going on with all you guys? And that's, that's what they said for their sports teams.
That's correct. Yeah, it's going to the athletic fields. So it's athletic motivated as opposed to maybe academic, yeah.
Excellent.
Go projects.
We'll have that in new high school for sure, though.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if Mrs. Nash could do a roll call vote to approve the agreement or the grant agreement.
Mr. Gomes? Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Very good. Thank you. That moves us into discussion items. First discussion item is 5.1, School Reentry Plan Update. Dr. Jermaine?
Okay, so as you can all see, the November calendars are provided for each school. I'm just looking at the backup that I've shared with you. We've begun this school year with monthly calendars for each of the schools to show the reentry. At this point in time, we are still Rogers and Thompson Middle School are in a hybrid model. Mondays is distance learning. And for those of you in the public that may not be aware, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, the A group, which is alphabetically divided, A through M, attends school in person while the other students are at home, coming in remotely. And then on Thursday and Friday and through Z, attends school in person. And A through N is on remote. For the little ones, PK through four, they are in school every day. We've been fortunate enough that at Pell Elementary School, we are able to follow the RIDO guidelines and the CDC guidelines as far as keeping our desks six feet apart. We're following all the social distancing, the mask wearing. We have meals, breakfast in the classroom. Some students have lunch in the classroom, others go to the cafeteria. And Principal Westman's been very good about rotating that so that at certain quarters will be a break. And students that were eating in the classroom may then be going to the cafeteria and vice versa. The other thing we've been doing is on a regular basis for all our families is we have been having our town hall meetings in English and in Spanish. And we also make sure on Wednesdays that we continue the communications to keep everyone aware of what's going on on a regular basis. Newport has been very, very lucky and fortunate at this point in time. We've only had one positive case, and I'm knocking on wood, in our district. And the majority of any types of quarantining or people that have to remain home really have to do with events that happen outside the school. They've been during non-school hours, and it's also been family. Our teachers, our personnel, they have their own families. And whether it's a partner, a wife or a husband, or it's one of their children, they also have to stay home and take care of, you know, their family. The district dashboard, it's updated every day so we can keep the public and everyone aware of what is going on in each school. And as far as what the numbers are, not only citywide, but statewide as well. Let me see, I just lost that. Sorry. Okay. Sorry, my screen just went off while I was talking to you. Let's see. The, the other thing is, we do continue. And at this point in time, our principals have reached out to our families that opted for 60-day distance learning. And we will have an update on how many are able to come back during that. I believe the principals are reaching out to families. They're looking at some of their classroom setups, and they are having discussions with teachers too. We have, for instance, at the elementary level, we have some teachers that are solely dedicated to distance learning. In some grade levels, we have, may have enough children that wish to come back that we may be working with the teachers and they would start to do in-person learning with students. Right now, for, I'm looking at each school. At, let's see, in our schools, we have, in the majority of classroom and grade levels, we have majority, most children, for instance, in kindergarten, 29 children are in distance learning. In-person learning, we have 112. In grade one, there's 60 in distance learning, 96 are in in-person learning. So it varies. Up at the high school, we have, for the most part, we have most of our students in-person learning in grade. And it, and I'll say this, it has shifted too. At the beginning of the year, we had 43 students, for instance, as seniors in distance learning. And now we have 63. So some have opted to go out to distance learning. And it's varied by grade level. We will know more about how many children will be coming back. Probably at the end of this week, as the principals start to finalize those numbers. But again, I want to applaud the staff, all staff, teachers, parent educators, building administrators, our custodians, tech, food services. It's really been a team effort, and we continue to keep health and safety the driving force for all decision-making. There will be a town hall meeting on Thursday night of this week. I'll be sharing more updates as far as distance learning, as far as the survey that we'll be sending out, repeating how we're handling travel all over the holidays. We are following the governor's lead as far as we are recommending that, if possible, please stay at home. If you do travel, we will be requiring the people to quarantine for 14 days. Children will have to quarantine for 14 days. Staff will have to quarantine for 14 days if they voluntarily travel. And as I've shared with the teachers, the teachers are aware that will impact their sick time. And not less, they feel they're able to teach. But I did say there'd be no promises there. We have to see how it all pans out after the holidays. But we are hoping that many do stay close to home, try to avoid travel as best as possible. We will not be accepting a negative test because two days later, you could come down with symptoms even after you have the test. So we are going to go with the 14-day quarantine. But overall, again, I'm knocking on wood, we've, we've been very, very fortunate in Newport. So as, you know, even today, I see Charahoe Middle High School, they're closing. I'm seeing another Coventry, I believe, is going to be, their high school's closing. Middletown already had two. I know this morning, it was a slightly contentious meeting between the superintendents and RIDO as there's a little bit of upset about the amount of time it's taking to get tested and then to get the test results. So that is very challenging. And I understand at RIDO, they're overwhelmed at the number of cases they have. So it's been very difficult for them to reach out to the districts to notify us of anything. So I will have to say again, it's to Dr. Flowers' point about it being one Newport. It's everyone working together and sharing information. And if anyone suspects anything, or, you know, we, we have been taking action as far as, all right, why don't you stay home today? Let's make sure, get tested. We've been very cautious about that. But again, we've been, we've been really, really lucky. So. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Neary, go right ahead.
A couple on different, on different fronts. So first, on the students who may return. So I know the surveys were do, I believe, last Friday. Do the principal, they were do back to the schools, to the last Friday. Do the principals have any sense in terms of percentages? How many, what is the percentage of parents who said they were interested in coming back? Or percentage of children? So if they have, you know, if they had 100 or 45 kids out in grade four, I'm making this up. I don't know the number. I mean, I could look it up. How many of those were 60-dayers? And how many of those 60-dayers are saying that they'd like to come back? Do we have that information anywhere?
I do, I asked to compile that information, but I don't have it now. Because yesterday and today, they were putting it all together, and I should have it by tomorrow so I can report it out on Thursday's town hall meeting, but I can also make sure the committee has it.
Yeah, that would be great, just to get a sense of what, what's the rate of return? You know, how quickly is it coming back and how many are wanting to come back? And then how many are left out?
I don't want to, oh, sorry, Mrs. Neary. I don't want to put the principals on the spot. I do know a couple are, if not all of them are here. They may want to chime in if they have their numbers finalized, but I understand if they don't. So.
We can wait. I mean, I can, I personally can wait till Thursday. That's fine. But I think it's important information to have just for us to have a sense of context. You know, if, again, if there were 45, 45 parents who said they were out till December, and if 45 of them said they're, they want to come back, obviously, there are choices to be made there pedagogically for principals. But it's just, it's just a nice thing to know because, as you said, we're doing well as a district. So it's quite possible that, that, that actually inspires more confidence and therefore more people want to come back. But then we have spacing, we could have spacing or different issues. So it just would be nice to know. And the other, the other comment I want to make, because that's one that just got salivated and I know we're making with our students and our teachers, it's not just not going somewhere for Thanksgiving, it's also keeping the group small. So that even if you're staying in Newport for Thanksgiving, but you're if you're staying in Newport for Thanksgiving, but you're inviting 25 people, that's, well, first of all, that's a violation of the order, but they're not in your household, so I think just maybe reinforcing, it's not just, don't go out of town, is that if you're staying, and we're trying to, we're really trying to emphasize that, if you're staying in Newport, you're, the gathering must be small. And ideally, it should be with really people in your household, and if it can't be people from your household, then making it smaller. So just as a, I, I wouldn't want people to just say, well, I'm not going anywhere, so I'm fine.
Yeah, no, I agree, and the teachers will tell you, and the principals, I, when I'm in the buildings, I tell them to all to get apart, spread apart, don't get near each other. I tell them not to eat with each other, get into the other room and get on the screen and talk to each other, but don't be with each other. So yes, I agree with that. Yes, keep your groups very, very small.
I have a question.
Okay, I'm just gonna give, I'm just gonna ask, I see Dr. Bean popped on, I didn't know if she was, I was expecting people to disappear from the screen, not appear when Colleen offered the principals, if they wanted to say something, but I just want to check with Dr. Bean to see if she did want to add anything, or was just, you're muted, you're on mute, Dr. Bean.
We sent out 92 surveys, and we have 32 children that are coming back that said they wanted to come back, out of the 92.
And just, I think I may have it somewhere, what the comeback would be after the holidays, correct, when that term starts? So what's the date? I'm not sure of the date for when they would come back, if there is space.
Yeah, it's on, well, we did 60 days, so that falls December 1st, which is right after the holidays, so the Thanksgiving holiday.
Great, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion on this on Thursday as well at the town meeting, so, go, thank you, Dr. Bean.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bullen, I'll get in there, Mr. Larry, there's a couple of the, I kind of cut off to let Dr. Bean speak, so, Mr. Bullen.
Okay, I have one question, then one comment. The first one is, how are those kids, if there's not enough spots, will it be just a lottery to get them back in, or is there a priority list?
We did do, we did talk, we look at our most, we're following RIDE guidance, we're looking at our most vulnerable students first, and that means our students that possibly have IEPs, ELL, second language students, and then if there's more than that, we have a lottery. And it's basically random name choosing out of the hat.
Okay, then I have another question. I think it's something we need to keep in mind, that if military students come in, and you know how they sometimes come in in November, right? That they, that you might want to think about making sure that they're not automatically put on distance learning in a classroom because of the military compact, you know, that they arrived late, so you have to give them, you know, special consideration when determining, you know, so do you see what I'm saying? So somebody comes, yeah, I don't know if anybody thought about it yet, but it's something we need to think about, you know, making sure that there's a space for them if they want back in the school.
So our liaison has actually reached out to us and shared with us that most have been advised not to bring their families, and if they do bring their families, they're actually being advised to keep them in distance learning. So that's, that's at least what our liaison has told us. And I don't believe at this point in time, we, I know we do have military families, and we're very grateful and appreciate that in our schools now with their children, but...
But just saying, if somebody shows up with the December class, that you have to take into account, they didn't have a choice back in September, what they were going to do, right? So they need to be given a pri, I think, you know, consideration for that, due to that military compact.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Flowers, you were next.
Thank you. We're always concerned, of course, with attendance, whether it's remote or in-person, but I, I would imagine for the youngsters who will be, those parents will be opting for them to be in, in the distance learning. I was just wondering, and I'm not looking for a number right now, is there a number of those kids who may have, you know, some fragile health issues, that it would be much safer for them to be at home? And so that even when things get back to whatever normal was, that a consideration would be given for the youngsters who cannot be in person for health reasons? But still, by the same token, they should be present for lessons. But I would imagine that there's some special consideration has to be given to those whose, whose health and well-being is, you know, the primary concern, and then get them perhaps back into the fold when, and if we ever get beyond the, the, such a communicable situation. You know, I said, so I said this before, when we look at attendance, we have to look at those youngsters who have some real severe health issues too.
Yes.
To think about.
Yes, I agree. And I think there will be some positives that come out of COVID in some respects, as far as how we do some meetings, how we get people engaged, how we can provide services for children, and maybe not always risk their health in order to have them in present.
That's important, yeah.
Yes.
All righty, Mr. Larry was next, and then I'll get up to you, Ms. Bullen, right? So, Mr. Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, time is Dr. Bean or Colleen, everyone. She mentioned there was 92 surveys sent out. How did you, how did you pick, if you look at the 5.1 numbers he gave us, there's over 215 kids that are out in grade five, six, seven, and eight. 215 is a number, I'm not sure it's kids on distance learning. Why was 92 picked?
That's the number of families that opted for the 60 days. So those were all the 60-day families.
Okay, so what about the other 110, 15, 20?
Those are the families that opted to stay out the first semester, so they'll, they'll be reaching out to them, and then the rest of the families wanted the full year.
Oh, so within that number, the other 110, the number is, there's people that are out for the whole year? There are people that are out for a semester, which would be November, or would it be January?
That's February 1st.
February 1st, okay, so it'd be February 1st, okay, that's what I didn't understand. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Ms. Bullen.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention that, I know there are small groups, but back to the One Newport, I know that there are a couple of remote sites that are running from some of our partners, which is Boys and Girls Club, and I think MLK Center, and I know in the past, some people have reached out to me from some of the other, some other organizations in town, particularly churches and things, that have thought about having remote sites, and as winter's coming, whether it might be, I'm just saying this publicly too, right now, because whether there could be some sharing of how it's worked and so on with some partner organizations, because I think other sites might be willing to step up to do some of that. So I just wanted to bring that up, and maybe there could be some outreach in that area.
So I've had two community meetings, and that's how, like, for instance, another partner we have is the Newport Rec. They've set up quite a few, and just recently, with Heather Strout over at MLK, and Mr. Assistant Principal Vakarat and Dr. Bean, we've set another site over there to help us in some of our projects, or smaller group settings, and we're going to be using the space over there as well. But we, we are welcome, we are welcoming anyone that would like to partner up. I can certainly, I'll speak with Kathy, and we'll set something up so we can set up, and we, what we did was, we sent out an invite through Newport Partners for Families, but if you know of someone or some agencies or organizations, you can let us know, and we can meet with them, because that was how we set up, especially in the summertime, when we knew the importance of, you know, we needed to limit the amount of time the children were in the building, and et cetera. So we knew that would affect and impact working families in the afternoons, and they've been great about adjusting their start times in the afternoon, so they take the children sooner for after-school programs. So we appreciate that greatly.
Right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with you on some of them, thank you.
Thanks. I think you were on mute, Mr. Chair.
I might have been. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. That would lead us into, the next is discussion on 5.2, which is District Goals 2020, 2020 to 2021, and I go to Dr. Jermaine on this, if you want to give us a little update.
Sure.
We have some discussion.
Okay, so over the summer, and particularly in August, when we were going through my evaluation, and then looking at where we'd like, you know, as a school committee, where you'd like to see the district, which direction you'd like to see it go, and, and also as far as focus areas, from the notes and from the information I had, the big buckets are, were, and for the public, academic excellence, and you had, and the committee specifically spoke to the ILP, which is something in grade six through 12 our students use, but to get that being used on a more regular basis. High-quality curriculum, improve the star rating for each of our schools, test scores, graduation rates. So the academic excellence, and in that body of work, that there's a, a working plan developed and drafted now, that is tactics on how to get there. Then the next one, so that was academic excellence. Focus on positive, supportive culture and climate, and that was a priority, and we talked about that a lot, as far as the importance of the relationship with families, students, teachers, and staff, HR departments, that, you know, everyone being proactive, supportive, and knowledgeable. The other thing we talked to, when we talked about this focus, was building trust again with families and community, as far as the schools, and how the schools will support and be there for our families and children. The next one was sustaining quality fiscal management. And by that, the, the takeaways were, make, see if there's a way we can have predictable staffing, so that from year to year, you know, we have a good idea of what our needs are going to be based upon data. And always staying in the black and no surprises. The next one was high-quality communication, and I do believe over the summer, we have increased and improved in our communication efforts with our Wednesday communication updates at the end of, you know, with the staff, at the beginning of the week, end of the week, as Ms. North shared, you know, sharing information with the staff, making them aware of initiatives and things like that, we are doing that. Our building principals have been great about sending out weekly updates to the families, anything and everything COVID-related. The district and the schools have been very good about keeping the community and people informed. We do want to focus and continue on transparency, but we also are looking into formalizing a communications plan, which I do have a draft of, and a new website going forward, something that's more intuitive and easy for our public to understand. So we've got the academic excellence, focus on positive, supportive climate, sustaining the quality fiscal management, improving communications. And then the next one is maintaining and creating an affordable facilities maintenance tracking system, so that on a regular basis, we have monthly updates and reports, not only to you, the school committee, but also to the public. And I think this is critical and important, especially since the overwhelming vote and support from the community from, for the bond, we need to be responsible, and we need to make sure we're showing them how we're taking, how we're taking care of the buildings we now have, but also how we will continue to maintain the buildings going forward, especially with our new build. The last one was keeping the importance of the Newport Area Career and Technical Center, NACTAC, in the forefront, and with the Rogers High Academic Course Offerings, et cetera, create a Rogers High School that's fully integrated with the academics and the CTE programming. And now, in my draft to you, I said, ideally with a new bond, this can help create that state-of-the-art high school with a family welcoming center, which we know is critical as far as making our families feeling comfortable in the school system. So those were the big buckets that we're focusing on, we're working on as administrators, my leadership with them, their leadership with their staffs. And then underneath it, I provided strategies on how to approach it. And the most important one that at least came out from my perspective was the importance of applying all actions with an equity lens, and being open to discuss and have outreach to address institutional bias, or anything we're seeing in the structure that we may not have recognized as that. So that was the first strategy. And then the second and third one, as far as the strategy, has to do with empowering and following our new regulations, and this, the, the importance of a school improvement team, working with school leaders and teachers, and the PTO to spark a collective action for the building. For the public, in January, all Rhode Island schools will move to what I think it's easiest way to explain it, is school-based site management, where the principal will be overseeing and running his or her building, which they've always done, but now they'll also be the ones that will be, you know, hiring staff, making staffing determinations, being more involved with budget decision, budget decision-making decisions. So that's very critical, that, that is why the school improvement team, which is your family leaders, your teachers, and your PTO, everyone should be involved in those processes. And then the other strategy about activating leadership from within the school, especially student voice, very important, teachers and staff, creating a professional working climate that is respectful and produces a high-achieving and powerful learning community. Those are the first three strategies. And then from there, increasing high school graduation rates, and that focuses on TMS and RHS as far as the metrics for improving their star rating, and then focus on student reading by grade level, and that's a Pell initiative with clear metrics and an action plan. And then the last one is one we've had all along, is creating the concept, and continuing the concept of One Newport, where it's not just one, it's all of us working together to create a great school system. I will post that, I'll put it out for the public, it was a discussion point, I'm sorry, I didn't have it up. To share the document, I will put it up, and I'll put it on a link, and I'll also in my Wednesday messaging, as long as my committee is okay with those thoughts, I will move it forward.
So, thank you, I'll go to some questions, I see some hands up. I will say that's very helpful, it is, it is good to pull everything together from the evaluation process, we kind of got into the election, so that's good. Hand in hand with this is, the other members of the committee know, we'll be doing several things as a new committee, the committee that was elected will be caucusing to develop leadership, and then in December, the school committee, the new school committee, and the existing and the newly-elected members, member, I should say, will meet to go set goals. So that's helpful. So that's helpful as a good basis for that and somewhere to start the dialogue. So thank you for that. And I'm going to go to Ms. Winslow was the first hand I saw. I think you muted.
I, if I don't have my cursor in the right spot, I'm clicking everywhere. So I think maybe Ray, Mr. Gomes, you just maybe half answered my question, but there's, I mean, goals. There's so much work to do, right? So we could go in so many directions of goals. And, and I know you've got a lot of documentation on this, Dr. Jermaine. And so it's almost like new strategic plan and in a sense. But if I have specific comments or ideas or I'm not sure when the best time is to bring that into the conversation. If we, if I can throw some ideas out now or if we do it when we meet as a new committee or in a workshop, I will defer to Mr. Gomes.
So don't go far because, no, I think a little bit now. I just bring up what I said, just so the public was aware as well that the goals, certainly you can speak to some goals or ideas, you know, along those lines that were just presented if you have others. But certainly you can present them now. And again, it'll be certainly just because of the timing coming out of an election and going into the December 1st is when the new committee will be sworn in and start and will meet to set goals for the coming school committee year, if you will, from December forward. So certainly you can discuss them now. It's good right now and, but there will be time as well to help develop those goals and to kind of formulate them and get them into where they belong as we move forward. But certainly go right ahead.
Well, it's just two things right now. And I think it's all budget related, right? Because we're in an odd year with COVID and we weren't allowed to hire. But I do think that as soon as we can hire, I would like to see a priority made for the principal position at Thompson, Thompson Middle School. And also, and I don't mean this to say that Dr. Bean's not doing a good job, but I just know she has a job already. And the same, on the same token for Mr. Young, now that the bond has passed. And I see all the work that they're doing to create the facilities maintenance plan. But we also want NACTAC to be in the center of our design and our thoughts for teaching, learning, everything. I don't want to see Mr. Young have to wear all these hats. So I just wanted to put those two positions out there as goals for as soon as we have the budget to make those two strategic hires. And I also really like us to, to think hard, long and hard about how far we search for those people. And especially for a principal at Thompson that will reflect our student body.
Thank you. Dr. Flowers, I see you.
Yeah, I, I like some of the, you know, some of the things you're saying, Stephanie. But when we're looking at the skeleton, so to speak, which although is kind of a filled skeleton of these goals, the strategies. And then when we come up with various sub-plans or some ideas, we always have to remember to keep two things in mind that perhaps a lot of suggestions we may have that should be addressed, we see where they can fit into what little pigeonhole, what little pocket. And like it, unfortunately, well, unfortunately, we always had to look at the present budget. And you hate to have something like that driving all of your decisions, but it's a fact of life. I mean, just like putting up a new building and expanding another one. You have X dollars to work with and the creativity comes in is how can we get the most for our money? And that's the same thing when we're hiring new people or getting another program or, like you say, really emphasizing the One Newport for all Newporters. And that, that's sort of the umbrella. And then we fit into all these sections, the different plans we have. That sometimes we, we accept a financial report. We accept reports such as this and then go off on a tangent that barely touches the, the main idea. So that's probably one of the toughest things working on, on committee is just keeping that focus, you know, that we are always trying to look at the big picture and say, yeah, we'd like to be able to have, you know, 10 more people in doing all these particular things with our kids. But we have that practical, pragmatic approach to everything. You know, I'm not being, I'm trying not to be a downer on this, but again, this will be practical. And that is something that the public has probably come to appreciate even more. As you said, transparency, that's what Jermaine said. The importance of being transparent and letting people know, say, you know, this is not an easy thing to do. And we have to say, no, we cannot, we cannot literally cannot do certain things. It's just, I can't say it enough that we always have to keep looking at that, the big box that we're trying to fit everything into.
Mrs. Neary, go right ahead.
If I may make one comment, I would like, Dr. Jermaine mentioned looking at everything through an equity lens. And if there is one thing I would like to not get lost as we have all this, as we have these conversations and as the next school committee has conversations about the planning and the goals is really that equity lens. Because again, when we look at our population, we have to make sure that all of the students are represented in the decisions that we make. And we are, we're not a majority minority district, but we're pretty close. And, and circumstances are different for different families. So I really, that, if there is one plea that I have is that the equity lens actually becomes the umbrella to everything, to every other policies, including the hires, right? Including the hires, including how we decide to communicate that it is really, it starts with that and then everything flows from that perspective. So are we reaching all of our families in terms of the transparency and the communication? When we, when the principals end up having more, more authority starting in January to make the hires or they looking at those hires? It doesn't matter which position, not just the ELL position, but all of the positions is everything that we do, does, does everything that we do reflect the population that we have and reflect equity? So that would be my, my plea that it, that it doesn't get lost in the, in the real conversations or the, the real difficult conversations about budgeting and where the money is coming from and cutting corners. Because we, I mean, we just need, there's only so much money. There's only so many things we could do. But I would like that lens to not be, do not be lost and to not just be relegated to one, to one section of the plan, that it be part of the entirety of the, the approach. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry.
So my concern has always been with goals is how do you measure them? And just looking at the first one, and I won't go through all of them. How do you measure PD? How do you measure, you know, I mean, obviously measure the star rating. You know, obviously measure graduation rate. But how do we measure some of these things? And everything, every goal should have a measurement in it to where you want to be. Otherwise, it's just something written on piece of paper, you know? And that's just my comment. A way would be it, as you all know, I work in a service. Actually, I'm in, I'm in the hotel right now in a nice room upstairs in the brighter room. But what you do in a hotel room, for example, let's say, and I'll give you a quick example. You want to, you look at your takeout orders and you say, hmm, we're only doing four or five takeout orders a night. You're saying, how do we increase that? So you contact some of these services like DoorDash. And all of a sudden, your numbers go up to 15 orders instead of five orders a night. So now you can measure and say, okay, so we increased takeout orders from five to 15 by going to DoorDash. So tie it into this thing here. I just want to know how we can measure these things when we do this as a group coming back up in another month. So we really need it, to me, it's important to have a measurement stick in this thing, period. No, thank you.
So very briefly, Mr. Larry, as the person for, I think I did it nine years, overseeing teaching and learning. It's the change in practice. When you implement a professional development and you implement it, it's the what's happening in the classroom? Has it changed? Is it still the same? And then when tools are introduced as far as what you're, you know, as a teacher to make some decisions, are those tools being used? And then the last one I'll comment on very quickly is assessments and data. When we're doing something in the classroom or as a teacher, I'm doing this and usually it's based on, I'm doing this because five of my students don't understand letter sound connection. So I'm making sure that they've, this is why we're doing this cat, cat professional development. So anyways, but I hear you and I'll be, I think you've raised a very, very good point in being more concrete so that the committee sees it. And so teachers, principals, everyone, we're all on the same page and understanding with professional development, how do we know if it's working or not working? And what's the time we need to see that take place? I believe Ms. Neary, the other day asked a question one meeting ago, how do we know when we will see these changes based on this program? That's exactly how you measure it.
Thank you.
Ms. Boatright?
Yeah, I think the last time you had one of these goals and priorities for the superintendent, you also put some backup to it with some milestones and so on. And some of these things are actually fairly easy to do some of that stuff with, like ILPs, like the interaction with them, high quality curriculum. You gave us a couple of, I think, two, maybe three meetings ago, the timeline of actions that are happening to get to a point to make a decision. So I think, you know, in a star rating, that's a rating. That's pretty easy to see, you know? But I think that that, to have some of that backup to make sure that some of the things stay online and have, have goals and targets is a great suggestion, Mr. Larry. And I totally support with that. So thank you. But this is, I think this is a very good document. Thank you.
And I do have a document in detail that I'll share that's very, well, lengthy. It's about nine pages or whatever. And then we, thanks to the great work of Kathy Nash, we've mapped out the school year with timelines and benchmarks. And it's online, so we'll be ready to share that with you. And I just want to share with all of you, this was all done in the spirit of when, in August, having the conversation, you wanted when a new committee came on, because new members were explaining that when I came on, I had no idea this is what the superintendent or what the district was working on. So we've kind of readjusted this. And with my school leaders, they know in January, they'll be coming here in front of all of you. And you'll have the opportunity to speak with them on what's going on and part of those benchmarks and the work. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? All righty. That would get us into section six with this, the consent agenda. 6.1, 6.2, approval of minutes, request for approval of invoices or requisitions, and request for approval of home instructions. There are motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening. Ms. Winslow, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Anybody have any question on any items on the consent agenda or comments? Don't see or hear any. So Ms. Nash, could you conduct a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening?
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers? Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero? Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
That's probably good. But seven is, next section is seven correspondence. In the correspondence, we have one correspondence from the Rhode Island Association of School Superintendents. It's a budget concern letter that they've sent to, to Governor Raimondo. And I believe it's the governor, yes, to Governor Raimondo. So is there a motion to receive the correspondence as presented this evening? Ms. Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Any questions or discussion on the letter?
Do you get an answer?
Yeah. They're working on, just, just like the testing, they're working on it.
Right.
Okay, Ms. Nash, could we have a roll call vote to accept or receive the correspondence as presented?
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Mr. Gunsals is paying a lot of close attention to the meeting tonight. He popped right back up on cue here. That leads us into section eight, which is reports from the superintendent and staff. And our first reports in that section are 8.1 and 8.2, expenditures and revenue reports and the restricted grant report. So Mr. Gunsals, I'll turn it over to you. And we'll see if there's any questions, any questions based on your monthly presentation. So go right ahead, Mr. Gunsals.
Good evening, everyone, again. Maybe I can just begin with questions right away. Are there any particular questions that anybody has would like further explanation on? Yes, please.
I wanted to say that your summary are very helpful every month. And you do a really nice job of putting that together, explaining, you know, financial items. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there was a couple, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
So I actually read your updates and I feel like, I feel very positive. And then I, I read the superintendent's letter asking the governor to release funds and I got very nervous. And so I just, I know you're telling us the truth, but I, I guess I'm looking for, you know, what, what your concerns are, maybe your backup plans or ideas or things, because I, we might have the money to cover things now, but when might that not be the case?
So really, we've just been sticking to our budget plan of conservative spending for the first few months until we get some stability numbers from revenue from state aid. So now it's really only spend, I don't want to say there's a spending freeze, but we really do consciously have discussions on whether or not these items have to be purchased. We've been lucky for the opening of school in the sense that we had the KIRs dollars available to us to come up with the things that we were not necessarily planning for beginning of June for the anticipation of opening schools and what exactly we need for the protection equipment. So that was helpful to get us open and. So that was helpful to get us open and buy us some more time for the General Assembly to pass a state budget. So then we can put together a different plan if needed.
Like being able to hire people.
Yeah.
Someday, it'll come again.
Well.
Go ahead, Ms. Boatright, Ms. Winslow, are you all set, Ms. Winslow?
I think so.
Okay. You can always ask more questions. Ms. Boatright?
I mean, when Ms. Winslow says, so we can hire people, I just have to say that, like, we don't know how much money they're going to give us. They could cut ours, they could cut it a lot, they could, you know, add it, add back what they were supposed to give us. So there's a huge range and that's what the frightening part of it. Ronnie's losing hair every now and then. Don't know about.
Oh, but that's actually helpful to, to know is that right now, right, we're getting ninety-two percent of the state aid we anticipated. And we don't know how long that might last.
Well, we, oh, let Ronnie talk.
That is correct. Our state aid forecast from the governor was approximately thirteen point nine million. We are paid currently at a rate of ninety-two percent of that, which if no changes took place, would equate to twelve point eight million dollars for the year.
And, and we're receiving, we're receiving that on a monthly basis, correct?
That's correct.
Broken, so we're getting like twelve, is it twelve equal payments or ten equal payments?
Typically, it's one twelfth, but there was somewhat of a freeze July and August. They made some catch-up payments and where, that's where our target is typically on one twelfth.
Perfect.
That's normal, in normal with the state.
But just to put the facts out there, the budget we're working on is not that ninety-two percent. It is, we're, we're thinking we're going to get more than that. That's what, what we had budgeted originally. So if we don't get the money and we're only paid at ninety-two percent, there will be cuts that will have to happen, which is, and I'm just saying that because I think that the public needs to know that. And we're all hoping that that's not the case, but that's what the problem is, is that if we're just getting the ninety-two percent, we have to make cuts between now and the end of the year. And that will not be easy.
So.
And go ahead, Dr. Jermaine.
So Ms. Winslow, that's why you see my organization, we're very concerned, especially with the way the supplemental aid was, when it was awarded, the wording that was used could lead to not giving us any more. If they really, you know, if you look at the wording, I'm always suspicious when people word or phrase things in a certain way that gives wiggle room, which I understand they need wiggle room because no one knows what COVID is going to do as far as the final financial impact. But that's why you see that type of letter from our organization. I'm on the lodge committee and we're very concerned. And I have to say Ronnie is very good about keeping us on track, being conservative. And he, he gives the positive upbeat.
And can I make a comment about, he, he has always said that state aid is, I call it an untouchable category. But the fact that they're still only paying us at ninety-two percent causes some concern. So, but we are having weekly meetings, the finance subcommittee with Mr. Gonzalez and Dr. Jermaine, just to stay on top of it and try to have some backup plans and backup to the backup plan, so. But we all need to have that settled and hopefully we all said after the election and come Jan, it might not be until January that, you know, but a lot will depend on federal funds, I think.
Right. And we are also having bi-weekly meetings with the city manager and city finance director, Mr. Gonzalez and I.
Just to correct you, we were supposed to know by July fourth, after the July fourth break is what we, this is where it all started. And here we are, two weeks before Thanksgiving and we don't know how big the turkey's going to be.
Right. But as Mr. Nicholson said, with the city budget, their budget will be an ongoing process all year, as is ours, even though we are working to a budget.
Correct.
Because we have to.
Any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
So Mr. Gonzalez, what I would like to request, and I'll give you a little bit of time, I asked this earlier, but especially now with the ninety-two percent and maybe some other funding, that at some point we get a detail of every single line item. So all the eyes of the committee can be on each line item and see what's in there to make cuts if we have to. This brings me to one of the question that came up was about the legal fees. We used to always get a monthly copy of all legal fees. Somebody had requested legal fees and you had spoke back to them, I forgot who it was, I'm sorry. But, so I would like to request, obviously give you the times to react to the state. But once it comes down where we're at, I'd like to request, at least for me, and I'm sure it gives everybody else, is a copy of the, of a detailed report of the whole budget.
Every line?
Excuse me?
So, no, I think, I think there's a few people just digesting the request, that's all. Understood. We're working that. Thank you.
Yep, yep, thank you.
This is just a check-in. Am I on mute? No, okay, this is a check-in. I believe we are, I just want to make sure, Mr. Leary, I believe we are giving you the attorney fees on a regular basis when we get them in, when we get them in. We don't get them in every month, but.
Somebody had requested, somebody had asked, I'm sorry, I don't remember who it was, but it was in one of the questions, you know, that came up and Mr. Gonzalez told what line item it was, or what number it was, so I don't remember what it was, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, Mr. Leary, I misunderstood what you said. I thought you were talking about the invoices. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be, I'm sure, I'm sorry, that would be wherever in line I'm, he gave him that number for, that person, if he knew, could add the line item five, three, four, two, I believe it is. That person could then ask for a detail of that line item and you'll see exactly what's going into line item five, three, four, two.
Thank you.
All righty, great.
If I may. For a second, with regard to the question that was forwarded, I believe it was Ms. Boatright. She asked, we're, we were qualifying or are listing our expenses for legal services and that's when I provided the object code. We did spend some time this afternoon in this particular object code and there is only one line item for legal services, sir.
Right, so if you look at legal services, five, three, four, two, you know, the amount of money allocated. If somebody was concerned about what they would ask, what I would ask for is a detailed list of that whole item. Because we have, I think, let me look it up right now if we can, sorry, three, oh, so we have ninety thousand dollars, am I right, Mr.?
Eighty, eighty-seven, eighty-seven.
Eight thousand, six hundred, yeah.
Yep. And the, ninety-eight percent of that is encumbered for our legal fees.
So not spent yet, not spent yet.
That's correct.
Right, exactly. And that's the, the point of, when you ask for a detailed listing, look at that. When if you, if you come up with some money that you need to come up with, you say, well, let's do this and that to make cuts. So, and that's why I believe the more eyes, the better, when you need a detail of each line item, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Terrific. On the unrestricted grants, any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? All right, perfect. Thank you. Let's, that will move us on down in the reports to, computer's a little slow, that gets us into eight point three enrollment and demographic reports. Back to the superintendent, Dr. Jermaine. You're muted.
I don't know, to the enrollment and reports and demographic, I don't know if there's any questions on that. The, you know, it's a very fluid report. These are the ones Doreen Schleckman produces. It shows us, you know, how many, that shows you the district mobility. For those that may not be aware, that Newport is a very high, has a high mobility rate, well, high being almost twenty percent. This, just in the month of October, we had seven students transfer within the district. Nine transferred to another district, eight moved out of state, eight transferred to a private school, three moved out of the country. One transferred to a charter school, six transferred to homeschooling, two graduated. It does have nine dropout on this and that is, there's a story behind that, which has to do with a lot of our children that do sign up and they don't necessarily finish their senior year and we put them over in GED. Then we had one moved and then we had forty-three new enrollments. So that's just a snapshot of one month in our school system. And it does tell a lot about what we deal with as far as children moving in, children moving out and where students go. And the rest has, at this point in time, the, as of when this snapshot was taken, that we had one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four students. I know we have more than that at this point in time. We have over two thousand, almost close to twenty-one hundred, but that's when she takes the enrollment summaries. Are there any questions?
I, I do. I just want to point out, like, I think this October is pretty high in terms of mobility, but ninety students either moved in or moved out in our district in one month, which like you pointed out is close to twenty percent, but that's twenty percent in one month. When you add up each month, these are different students, not always, right? But it, it's an incredibly high mobility rate. I just want to point that out. And second of all, I also wanted to point out that this is a good time to say that our numbers, you know, for free and reduced lunch have gone, you know, up again. Thompson is almost at seventy-three percent. You know, we have a lot of families that need, you know, extra food and support. And just so everyone knows, the, that the meals until the end of the year are free, being provided through the government for our students. So just something, and I'd heard some people last month that hadn't gotten that message, so I just wanted to point it out again.
Right, the summer meals program has been extended throughout the entire school year. So all meals are free and as a matter of fact, as Mrs. Boland, who oversees the health and wellness committee, we're working on a grant with MLK, Heather Strout, Tracy Shea, the community center, and Ms. King, Cindy King, with Chartwells. And we're looking to expand it into supper. And as the months get colder and we have our long extension of holidays, five-day meal, five-day packages we were talking to today will be provided for some of our families. So we're looking into that. But going back to the mobility, I think some in the community, when you look at a school system, it's a reflection of community. And some of it has to do with affordability and housing, stable housing, homelessness, all of the above. But we need to look at all the factors and the indicators in order to help to lessen that mobility for our children and our families. So it's just something, that's why it's not just one aspect.
And this is with the restrictions on traveling. It's. But it's also with COVID and people being let go of jobs and people now having, losing their housing. And so there's a lot of factors right now. Yeah, yeah.
Definitely. Thank you. Any other questions on those?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
Charlie, am I, am I, Mr. One second, does she, so how many students are we down this year? I've got ninety for one month, but is there a total number?
I can get back to you with that number. What I'd like to do is show you how many we had in October of last year and how many we, I think that would be helpful, like you were talking about metrics, so we can do October to October, I'll be happy to provide that for you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, I'll send that up. Tonight or tomorrow?
It probably wouldn't hurt to, on the enrollment report, just give us year, the previous year going forward. So next, in November, we would have November's number for 2020, November's number for 2019.
Right.
You could make that part of the report on a monthly basis, right?
Correct. And as a matter of fact, in the weekly, if you wanted to just, it is.
It is, yeah.
It is in the weekly, if you look at your weekly report, Mr. Leary, the far right tells you where we were at the beginning of last year and where we are at the beginning of this year and last year. But we also show last year versus this year, but I'll get that together for you.
Thank you.
I would, I would just caution that this is going to be the one year where year-to-year comparisons are not, they're not really going to tell us anything because we're in a one-in-a-hundred-year pandemic. So we're not going to see a trend. We're, we're not going to be able to make out a trend other than it's a pandemic, just.
Good point, good point.
Exactly. Yes. Same goes with the budget. Everything is.
Well, yeah, even, even what Becky just said about, Mrs. Boland just said about the meals, right? The, the record unemployment that we're finding ourselves in, the record homelessness, the food insecurity, the housing insecurity, that is not normal.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just not. So everything, all those numbers need to come with buckets of salt and big asterisks.
So this is the wonders of technology. Someone has already looked it up. And Mr. Leary, for 2019, it was two thousand one hundred seventy-eight students at this time, at last year. This year it's twenty, oh, two thousand twenty-four, there's a difference of a hundred, one hundred fifty-four students.
Very good, thank you very much.
And thank you, Director Andrade.
So two thousand twenty-four? The report here said twenty forty-seven on the report tonight, yeah?
Yes, but she, what Director Andrade's looking at is our weeklies, which I find to be more reliable. And that was for the month of October.
Okay.
Okay? Because that's in real time. Which the snapshot that Ms. Schleckman is too, but that snapshot was probably two or three weeks ago.
Gotcha.
Right, the snapshot is on October thirtieth, so.
Yes.
I like all the snapshots myself, so.
All right, so now, do you want me to move on, tying into this is the homeless report? And if you look at our homeless report where we were in June, and if you look at October, we're just about the same as we were in June, except for the number of families is less. In June, we had twenty-three families reported as homeless. Now we have thirteen in October, but you'll notice that the number of students is about the same. It was thirty in June and twenty-six in October. We have seen an increase since September, though, if you go from September to October. So the homeless report does show we're trending back up.
Right. And if I may, I think that's going to go back up because if you think about June and some of our populations and transient summer work, that allows for a certain level of stability when we're in an economy that's very tourist-based and that's dwindling. So, you know, businesses are closing, restaurants are closing, you just don't need as much as we go into the winter. I think we should anticipate those numbers going up because there's going to be essentially a second wave of unemployment.
Right. Eight-five, I'm sorry.
I had the same thought.
Evictions is starting up again.
And then eight-five, the distance learning and in-person learning, that chart is pretty self-explanatory per grade level. And then we have the facility update that Mr. Young has provided and the Arden Report.
If, I hope there's some questions for Mr. Young because he's waited patiently to this point.
I'm fine if there are no questions. I'm fine with that.
Ms. Winslow had her hands up first, so we're going to go with Ms. Winslow.
I'm really sorry because it's not a question for Mr. Young.
But she did.
Don't worry, Robert.
She did volunteer to take away some of my jobs next year, so that's okay.
Yeah, she's looking out for you anyhow. Go ahead, Ms. Winslow. We'll still go with your question, then we'll go to Ms. Boatright.
I'm just muted.
You just muted yourself again.
Her question.
Unmuted now. On the agenda, sometimes there's the Sea Tree reports and I think I was going to ask in conjunction with that, but do you have an update on the attendance reporting? That was put on hold.
Right. We don't have, we don't have a format right now at this moment in time. As, as a matter of fact, attendance is not going to be part of any of the school's accountabilities this year. It will be announced tomorrow because of COVID. And that is why I think it's taking a little while to get this all set up. I did find out, I had a meeting earlier this morning with Ride and they informed me. It will not be part of the accountability going forward because of COVID.
But we're still tracking it and.
Oh, yes, we're still tracking it.
Still calling families and.
Oh, yes.
We're doing all that and.
We're doing all that. We're, we're still, we just want to find a really simple tool. And I have to tell you, Doreen's been very involved in getting the year-end reports done. So it did, it has taken a back burner, especially since now we're being informed it's not going to be part of our accountability going forward. So focus on the assessments, focus on the quality of teaching and learning, focus on health and safety.
All right. Before we go to Mr. Young, any other questions prior to the facilities report? All right, Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
So one, I want to thank you for starting this facilities report because I think it's going to be super helpful for keeping track of the dollars that we need to spend to keep the buildings up to speed and in good condition. It is, I just, you know, I, it's kind of long. And so I'm going to ask that, you know, and I know that, so it's great, so thank you. I had some ideas, if we could have like green, like for things that have been done along with the costs, then red, things that really are high priority needing to be done, and yellow, things that are on the to-do list kind of thing. And then, you know, you can do smaller print and things like that because it's very large and you have some, one item per page in some cases.
Yeah. I broke those down by.
By doing some things by category, you had some things in there by, you know, end of its life and some things that were damaged and things like that. So I don't know what category it would be best to put them in, but definitely by schools, that's great. And then the codes, red, green, red, yellow. But then by category, as an example, why the use, end of useful life, when we see some of those at Pell, doing the new build, we want to know why are some of these things already to the end of their life so we don't do it again, you know, like.
Sure.
I'm sort of depressed when I saw many of the things that were at the end of its useful life at Pell. And so also want to look into that a little bit more because I don't understand why that is. Like are things, is there warranty on them in some cases and things like that? So if we could do some of that and then do some research, particularly, again, looking at Pell, why some of those things are happening, I would really like to have a conversation from a facilities group on that because I don't think we should be having too many of those issues at this point in time, so.
Sure. I'll, I'll work on that and then I will send it to, to the subcommittee. You know, then we can hopefully meet again before the next school committee meeting.
Can I say something? Because I guess I misunderstood it.
Go right ahead, Ms. Neary.
And really, I should not speak. I'm not going to be dealing with this next month. But I really like this report, Mr. Young. I really, really like it. It is really important for us to know what's happening in each building. What my understanding and clearly, I think I missed it because Mrs. Boatright is saying that there are things at the use, end of useful life. So I saw those, but I also saw those as P4, which I assume meant was the lowest priority and that they were still six to 10 years out. Is that what you, because that's how I understood the report. Am I understanding it wrong?
That's correct, yeah. So yeah, P4, the longest.
Right. So some, so, so anything that you have as useful, end of useful life, and if you look at the priority, it means 10, six to 10 years from now is at the end of its useful life.
Some of them, yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, that's how I understood the report. So now all of a sudden I was scared and I misunderstood it, that it meant that they were right now at the end of their useful life. They're not.
Yeah, many of them are not used. There's a very few that are useful, like, like the water cooler at Thompson. That's six to 10 years, you know, so and it's.
Right, okay. So we're, so, okay. I mean, I agree with Mrs. Boatright. We need to know because, you know, if, if we, if we bought things 10 years ago and they told us that they were going to last 20 years, then it would make sense that in 10 years, they're at the end of their useful life. If they were at the end of their useful life today, 10 years in, then there's a problem and we want to know that if we're going, going forward, building something new. Okay, that's it. Yeah, because that's how I had understood it with those years at the bottom. So I got worried a little bit. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
I have a question. It's actually a comment. Incredible job putting this together. And I also agree with, it's really going to be important that any things that we should do differently on the next building, that you, we've got to, you know, compile a list of those things, like, you know, for instance, this system here, you know, was inefficient, didn't work well or whatever, just so that we don't make any of those, you know, same errors, you know, again. So hopefully you don't go anywhere, but we also need to make sure we put this on a list somewhere.
There aren't too many school building facility things that are done like they were 65 years ago. So I don't think you have to worry too much about that.
Yeah, not on that one, but on Pell, Thompson.
And yeah, Dr. Flowers.
Yeah, and looking at that, you know, some will list it as damage and they seem to be exterior.
Yeah.
Is that like water damage elements?
It varies. Yeah, wear and tear, elements, some of it's water. Yeah, so it's just.
The damage, I said, what's going on? You know, it's like that, but sometimes something.
It just happens, yes.
But interior, I mean, is there something that should be, well, the high school, we know about that at this age. But even say at Thompson and at Pell, is there?
Well, it's just damage, it's just, you know, it's just from, like, if it's painted wall finish, it's maybe something bumped up against it or, you know, just things like that, or just where it's damaged. Yeah, tiles are falling and those are things we're working on over the summer. I actually started in March, but yeah, there's still some things that need to be fixed up.
Yeah. So some of it is, but I think as Mr. Gones just mentioned, you know, saying that materials and all of these things nowadays, hopefully are far more put together much better with better quality than they were 60 years ago plus. And of course, maybe low bid back then might have been part of it too.
Right.
Low bid's not always the best. It was an excellent report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Leary?
No, I'm going to send everybody a little thing later on, but thank you.
Okay, just thought this would be right up your alley, all these nice.
It is right up my alley. It is right up my alley. I sent the report and asked everybody to look back to the minutes back from 10, eight, seven years ago when I put in, you know, we put 1% of our budget and it was taken out. So I'm going to find all the notes a minute and send it and then we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Any other questions, concerns? Discussion. See you none. I think we're all set. Mr. Young, thank you for hanging around.
Thank you.
Great job. It is very, it was very useful and it's a great report. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
And then that takes us to 8.7 Superintendent's Partnership Collaborations Personnel, Dr. Jermaine. You're muted. I'm with the mute button.
I go between screens. So when I get off that screen, I'm not on this screen. Okay. Um, let's see. I, yes, I included this month, the Newport Partnership for Families. This, the Education First Success, our three meetings. If you'll see, we had a great summer. We had 107 students participate more than 25% of the time out of the 150 who signed up. So we did a great job there. We, we have seen gains in phonemic awareness in all programs. We had access to Lexia, we, and that's the technology with Mr. Young and our principals working together, Tracy Westman and Catherine McCann. So they did an excellent job in that area for math. Reflex was used by the Martin Luther King and our SLA that was housed at Pell and, oh, I'm sorry, in the Boys and Girls Club. So they're still looking at the assessments, but overall, the program was very successful. And during the summer, I don't know if any of you are aware or remember, there was news, we had newspaper articles every two weeks highlighting the different aspects of the R3 program and we'll continue that into next summer. We've been working with Mary Claire Knight from United Way, so we'll continue to work with them. And we're starting, believe it or not, we're starting to gear up and start the, at least the structure of the planning for the summer program, so, summer programming for next year. We'll have more details most likely February, March. Again, our partners with Martin Luther King, with Christina Ruth, with the Boys and Girls Club, very successful and they did a great job. Kudos to Colleen Croto from Pell Elementary School, who helped to lead the reporting out for the Newport Public Schools. So I want to thank her for her hard work. And the other attachment are appointments, resignations, leaves, making you aware of what's been going on with personnel. Every one that is listed there is budgeted and just, that came up, a question that came up in our finance meeting, subcommittee meeting today, was the question about what about funding, what about positions? And as I stated to the subcommittee, any and all positions that we have put before, forward to you are in the budget and are budgeted. And if at any time there's not that case, of course, I would have the conversation with all of you about that. And if it was a dire position we must fill, then I would work with Mr. Gonzalez, would find ways of funding it or what alternatives we would have to do if we needed to hire a specific position, et cetera. For the public, I think it's important for the public to understand why I'm saying all this because in January, with the change in legislation that was passed in 2019, in 2020, part of the school board's appointments and approvals, that was changed to the superintendent for the hiring and appointments. Now that changes in January of 2021 to the principals as part of site-based management. It's a process and structure very similar to what they have in the state of Massachusetts. And I think Rhode Island actually looked at that structure when they put this legislation into place back in 2019. But just as I keep all of you in the loop, I continue, I know that process will continue and we'll just, it'll just come to me and I'll pass up to you. And again, principals will have the expectation, funding alerts and all of the above. So there you go.
Ms. Boland, I'm glad everything settled down there. I thought you might have been having an aftershock over in your neighborhood or something.
My phone was fully charged and just from this phone conversation, it went dead, so.
I just wasn't sure if there was a tremor or another earthquake hitting your neighborhood or something. Everything went tipsy-turvy there for a while. Any questions for the superintendent on that last segment, Ms. Winslow?
So on the, the read by three, there's a couple of different reading programs happening and a lot of initiatives. And I feel like I may have read it somewhere or heard it somewhere, or maybe I imagined it myself. But is there, and I don't know if you'll know this, or you can direct me to, who might, but do we ever offer support for the parents to become readers to their children, reader, more readers themselves, readers in English or their own language and read to their kids more often?
We have community partners and one of them is Parents as Teachers, PAT. That is one of our community partners that does do that. I know in a very global approach, baby steps, I know, at least when I used to attend, used to have read-alongs and show, show parents how to hold the book, et cetera. I'll have to go back and talk with my elementary principal because we, I'm not sure if we do it on a regular basis on, for every grade level. I do know, again, Director Andrade just texted me to, to remember, remind me that our preschool grant is doing exactly as you said and it's going to be training our parents. It has not started yet. Teachers are being trained. But that was part of one of the grants we received for literacy.
The CLSD.
CLSD, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Oh, and we also are going to have a library for parents as well.
Great. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Director Andrade.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
So, Ms. Jermaine, I have a couple of questions here now. And this is probably more for the press to know that, and I know the people in the committee are aware of it. So the school committee does no longer gives the vice consent to hiring. Am I correct?
That is correct. That stopped in January 1st, 2020.
Correct. And then, so they never see resumes anymore? They never see anything else anymore? Am I correct?
That is correct.
So you just, well, I guess your case is, you've hired 10 more teacher assistants. Well, not all teacher assistants. There's one teacher and two other ones in there. And this is all in the budget?
Correct.
So how does the school committee get involved besides stuff right now saying, like, how many parrot kids do we have? Could we move around? Could we have done something differently? Because you've, you've hired, you know, 10 people and I understand there's six other ones and six others for cafeteria duty and six for coaching, which have been there, you know, but how do you, how do we, what, how do you, how do I say yes now to these things? I mean, we don't even have a voice in it. We have to accept each one of these things separately now?
No, I believe, Mr. Leary, I think the overall, and you have to look at the legislation. I think the legislation, it was really about giving authority and oversight and the running of the organization to the superintendents, like running a business. Like running a business, like a CEO in a company or anything of that nature. And then from there, the governing board, this, the school committee oversees the budget overall and also, um, policy as well. So it's more from a governance perspective, and I, and I can't, and I don't know, I have to say when the legislation was passed and when it moved forward, it was, um, really my understanding and being on the Ledge Committee, it was to give the superintendents the ability to run the organizations without getting politics involved or anything of that nature. So it was basically to give the superintendents the authority to do the hiring, do the dismissing, et cetera. But, and I don't know who sponsored the bill, who put the bill in either at this point in time. And eventually it's moving to school-based, yes, school-based leadership, and the principals will start to kind of run their own, um, run their own buildings, and they will, you know, do the interviewing. And, you know, they have to follow policy just as I do, and they also have to abide by regulations, law, everything.
Okay, it's not to the public to wear that and hope the press is aware of that too, we have no concern. So Mr. Gomes, when we do the reports, I like to have a separate vote on the superintendent's update. Um, I can, I cannot vote, and I don't know anything about any of these people, uh, tend being hired. I don't know if the, if the, we could have moved somebody else in that direction, so it's totally out of our hands now. Um, that's the way it is, that's the way it is, but, um, it's a discouraging, you know? So, um, can we have a separate vote now, one section of the, of the reports from the superintendent, Mr. Chairman?
So, uh, we don't, our vote is generally just to accept the reports, but, yeah, we can, uh, we can take it out of, that's, that's your choice, that's not a problem.
Right, or if you want one vote, I want to be clear that I don't now accept the report of 8.7, I don't support it, you know, without any knowledge.
I, I just need to be really clear, I'm presenting the report to inform. That's just to keep the school committee aware of what is happening as far as hires, structures, people leaving, people coming, et cetera.
Exactly.
How would, how would I know that if you couldn't move some other parage kids around instead of hiring eight of them, you know, eight new ones?
I think, Mr. Leary, I believe that's why the law was put in, this, that's the change. I think that was the purpose of the legislation, that that wasn't supposed to be the role of the school board. That that was the job of the person running the organization, which in this case is called the superintendent. In other places it's called the CEO, et cetera.
At the end of the year, if we're short X amount of dollars, and we have, and I, didn't I, didn't I hear Mr. Gomes say not to hire and freeze, but we're watching things?
That is correct, that is correct.
So this is what I mean, we may not have the voice, we may not have the problem, but I want to be clear that I'm not supporting this. I don't care how everyone feels, that's, that's their vote, but, you know, you, you're responsible for your own vote. And I just, I, this is, this to me, without a lot of discussion on each one of them, where you're going, where it came from, what happened, I can't accept it. So if, if it's just, except for Mr. Gomes, I'm gonna go through all of them, I will, I'll just vote no on all of them, it doesn't matter to me, but I can't accept 8.7 the way it's presented, and I understand the law.
Okay, so Mr. Leary, it doesn't require a vote?
Okay, no problem, so no vote, thank you very much, it's even better.
Thank you, I just wanted to let you know, I just wanted to let you know.
No, that's great, thank you.
Keeping you informed.
Ms. Boatright, go ahead.
I mean, I was gonna say that, you know, what, I think our job is we, we get, we make the recommendations as a team and we all vote on it, what we're gonna ask for this city council to give us, everything else is already kind of determined. We on the, um, finance committee are trying to make sure that we are on top of all revenue sources, that we are tracking them and that the school department is getting, ensuring the income and is on top of the expenses, and it's gonna be up to us to say, you know, just verify. All we are doing is verifying all the way through, and then at a point, our job is to say, you know, you gotta cut X amount, and it's up to them to decide how to do it. So I think that's really what it comes down to. Would you agree, Dr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Yes, so all you do is talk specific numbers. And, but it, our job is to totally be in the loop to understand and verify the numbers as they are presented to us.
So, thank you for that, so with that said, could you, at your convenience, um, Ms. Jermaine, give us a list of total number of parage kids we have in the system?
Yes, absolutely.
I wouldn't expect that, obviously, but you can send it to everybody, thank you.
All righty, any other questions on the report? Seeing none, or hearing none, that moves us into suggested meeting dates and agenda items. Uh, 9.1, the, we have the, one of the only things is the, um, next meeting of the school committee is Tuesday, December 8th, regular school committee meeting, and I know that we uh, are starting the building committee ramping up with the approval of the bond, so there'll be school committee, uh, school building committee meetings that will be to watch for, but we don't have, I think the next one is next week, I believe, there's one.
Next Monday.
Ms. Bowden, go right ahead.
I, is this the last meeting that Mrs. Neary will be attending?
Yeah, we'll get to that in a minute, but you are correct.
All right.
Uh, Ms. Boatright, you all set?
I was just gonna say it's next Monday.
Next Monday is the next one, correct, but there'll be a series of those to advertise going forward.
Right.
So that is it, uh, Dr. Jermaine?
Is there a caucus?
There is a meeting Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Correct, there's a caucus of the incoming school committee, yes, for Thursday evening, 5 o'clock.
So, Mr. Gomes?
Mr. Leary?
I mentioned to Kathy, I don't know if she told it to everybody, and she can say if she wants. I, um, am only available for an hour at the most on Thursday for the caucus, I have, ends up from Little Rock Caucus, so we're going out. Um, so I can only be there for like an hour, I did email Kathy that, um, she's quite aware of it, but I didn't reply at all, so um, let you know when you're there, I'll only be for the first hour, so at the most.
All right, Mr. Leary, I hope the minute's about fifteen minutes long on Thursday night, so the hour, if we're there for an hour, you're gonna surprise me, so.
That's right up my alley.
Thank you. With a little bit of luck, um, but yeah, no, I think you'll be good on Thursday night. I hope you can get out and enjoy your friend, so, um, that is it on meetings, uh, and as Ms. Boat, as Ms. Bowden said, it is uh, Ms. Neary's last meeting with us. I may try to get another one in the next three weeks, just so we can aggravate her and get a meeting of some sorted. But I, I will say that, uh, I am gonna miss, Ida, we've, it's been great having her on. I've, I've totally enjoyed her time on the committee, I've leaned on her for a lot of things, and, um, she's been, uh, she's been wonderful to have, so I'll start that, and I know a few other members will wanna say things, maybe Mrs. Bowden, since she brought it up.
Uh, yep, let me just unmute, hold on. Okay, um, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Neary from the bottom of my heart, she's brought a different perspective to the school committee with all of her experience at Salve, you know? We have her to thank for the new protocol when there's, uh, emergency situations. I mean, that's just the start, and, and also, you know, her insight with having two kids in school. She's just been, you know, not only a great school committee member, but a great friend too, and I want to thank you.
Yes, uh, go right ahead, Ms. Boatright, I see you next up there.
Yes, I wanted to agree a hundred percent with what, uh, Mrs. Bowden just said, and having only served two years along with you since we're both junior members, as still at the moment. Uh, I will be very sad to see you go, because you have brought a lot of good insight and knowledge and perspective that, um, we have really enjoyed, and I have particularly, thank you.
So just to clarify, Ms. Winslow has you trumped on the junior member, because she's only been here for six months, so the junioress went away with, with Ms. Winslow coming on to finish out Mrs. Sylvia's term, so you've lost your, you've lost your junior members title, sorry.
Long ago, long ago, sorry about that.
Just wanted to point that out, Ms. Winslow was truly the junior member, so.
But she was not, she didn't have to go through that whole election process twice. So there you go, but neither did I, so, but anyhow, I just wanted to thank you, and it's been great working with you and get to know you, thank you.
Um, Dr. Flowers?
Yes, Ida, it's, it's good to know you, I've known you before, of course, in a different aspect, and, um, I'm pretty sure you're still going to be involved with the schools and, and not just through your kids, but just being a good community member, so, um, we'll be seeing you, I'm sure, and I've enjoyed working with you, so take good care, and this is, this is the, the senior member here, I'm one of the old folk.
I'll let that go.
Yeah.
I'm not saying a word. Dr. Jermaine?
Um, thank you, um, I'm muted, okay, so, um, Ms. Neary, Ida, I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate your directness and your just say it like it is. And I said this, uh, to you privately, and I've said it with the committee present, that I appreciate your honesty and your, um, drive to make Newport a great school system. And I will not say goodbye, because I know I will be in touch with you, and if it's Saturday morning before you go out to Rocco or whatever. But, but, um, I just want to say thank you, I've learned a lot, I have so much more to learn. And I look forward to continuing to lean on you, and I want you to just say it like it is, because I know I knew that, so thank you.
We all do. Ms. Winslow?
Um, I'll try to say this without crying, actually, because.
Do not cry.
Well, I won't, but I think I'm sitting here because of you, because of, um, your inspiration, and I really mean that, I'm gonna try my hardest to do the job you're doing now. I don't, I, everything else has been said already, I'm grateful to call you my friend. C'est du fond du coeur. And, and yeah, I, I, I'm gonna think about what would I say, you know, when I look at, when I look at this role.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that is a good one, any other comments from Mrs. Neary?
I just want to thank all of you, I just want to thank all of you, um, um, for the senior members for taking me in. I, special thanks, um, to you, Ray. It was amazing to be mentored by you and to watch you do the work. I just learned a lot, I learned a lot about watching you, I learned a lot about leadership watching you, I learned a lot about quiet leadership, which I am not a quiet person, so it was, it's, it's, yeah, I, I, I just learned a lot and I appreciate, and I learned, um, I, I, I love the deliberative process in, in, just in general. So I really like this, I really like, I really like the committee of seven people with agreements and disagreements and going back and forth, that, there's something I, it's something I've enjoyed. I am passionate about the Newport Public Schools, and not just because my, my kids are in it, but because, because I love Newport, we've moved here, we wanna live here, and all, all cities need great schools to survive. So that's not, so, I'm not going anywhere in terms of advocacy for the school in any way, shape, or form. And any, I'm, I'm happy to help, I'm happy to be of counsel, I'm happy to shut up if you need me to shut up. But, like, thank you all, really, um, Dr. Flowers, Becky in particular, because you've known me the longest. Uh, Becky, thank you for pushing me to run, which you told me like six years ago, eight years ago, however long that was. So thank you for that, thank you for helping raise my children, I say that to you all the time, but it's true. So thank you all, I will miss you, um, I may not miss three hour long meetings. And I don't know what I'm gonna do for two years, because I know I'm going to be biting my tongue going, oh, I would have been, I would have done this, oh, I would have done this, but this is, this is, um, for the next two years, I'm going to be a private citizen, um, so, good luck all. Uh, and Bobby, I want to say something to you very specifically, because your emphasis on process and your emphasis on fiscal responsibility, even when it made me crazy, is really, really appreciated. Because.
I tried to make you crazy.
Well, that's okay, because, because somebody has to say it, and sometimes somebody has to say it. So I appreciate that, and I, um, and I appreciate for everyone the fact that we were able to work together, and we stayed civil with each other, I hope that we can say that we are friends with each other. And if there's anything, if there was one thing that pushed me to run two years ago is that it felt that the members of the school committee were not friends with each other and/or with the superintendent, and I'm hoping if there's any legacy, that that is better, because we're all, as Dr. Flowers said, we are all one Newport, we're all one team. We have to make this work, um, and we, we can't make it work individually, and we need the whole, we need the whole team, so, good luck. Mr. Drink, I think you're on, you're on the call, so good luck to you, this is a good group to work with. And, you know, let's, um, onward and forward, Newport, let's, let's do this, and let's build ourselves a high school and an extension to Pell. Thank you, thank you all.
Well, thank you, and again, I'm a little disappointed looking down that we have twenty-eight minutes to go to the three hour mark. We couldn't keep you right for the whole money's worth of three hours tonight, but, uh, I hope, uh, I know you'll be around, as we said and we've talked, and I know you'll be around, and, uh, the private citizen might be a stretch for where you're going, but you'll be around, and I know we'll hear from you and lean on you, so, thank you for your time. It's much appreciated. So that's the, uh, no executive session, and that brings us to adjournment, so a motion to adjourn would be in order. Uh, Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Neary, her last action on the, um, school committee, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, uh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all, and, uh, have a wonderful night, thank you.
Good night all.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you, Ida.